Each of Texas's 254 counties is governed by Commissioner's Court. That consists of one county judge and four commissioners. Currently, Harris County is dealing with a $48 million budget deficit heading into the 2026 fiscal year, which starts on October 1st, which is one of the Commissioner's Court's key responsibilities. To manage the deficit, commissioners have proposed budget cuts that will impact certain Harris County departments. The Commissioner's Court is expected to finalize the budget cuts at a meeting September 9th, even though there isn't consensus on the court that the cuts are the right path forward. Hanging over the conversation is a recent bill to raise salaries for Harris County law enforcement that is adding $110 million to the budget. And joining us now is Harris County Precinct 4 County Commissioner Leslie Breones. To speak about these topics in detail, Commissioner Breones, welcome to Hello Houston.
Thank you for having me and congratulations on National Radio Day. Happy to celebrate with y'all. Thank you for what you do for Houston and Harris County.
Thank you. And if you would like to join the conversation with a question for Commissioner Breones, you can call now, text, or call 713-440-8870. Commissioner Breones, what, let's just start right off the bat. What does the county's financial situation look like heading into the fiscal year of 2026?
Yes, so we are working hard as we have been for months and we will pass a balanced budget for the October 1st fiscal year 26. So I'm happy to go into as much detail as you would like, but this has been thousands of hours of team members work, working collaboratively with over 70 county departments, really identifying where we can streamline efforts, where we can find savings, where certain departments have had historic surpluses, how we can reallocate. So trying to be as strategic and as solutions oriented as possible because we will close this gap. And as someone who grew up check to check, it is not only important to me as one of your county commissioners, but it's important to me as a taxpayer, as a mom of three, especially where I came from.
Well, you're almost there.
Almost there.
Forty-eight million dollar deficit, but we're talking about a billion dollar budget.
Yes, so we have, the general fund is about a $2.7 billion budget. So we're down to less than 2%. So I'm an optimist.
So close.
Yes, talk to us about that 2%. What do y'all, what is the plan and the solution?
Well, let me walk you through where we've been able to, and then I'm happy to talk about the law enforcement pay increase and all the different factors and kind of what has led us to today. But I, and I come at this very much, I used to be a chief operations officer for a multi-billion dollar nonprofit. So to me, finding operational efficiencies and ways we can do more with less is of like, it fires me up in a way that maybe people may not find as sexy.
Finally, a scalpel person.
Yes, but it has to be strategic and thoughtful, right? Because to me, the services we offer to the people of Harris County are non-negotiable, executing with excellence, non-negotiable. So we will get it done as stewards and as public servants. So here, just to, if I can start with kind of what, where we find ourselves. So last year, and I'm smiling because I know how much you love weather.
Yes, you're right.
As you know, we had the derecho and barrel and we had to do the one-time disaster exemption of the 8%. But before that, for the last six years, Harris County's tax rate has actually decreased for the last six years. And then last year, we had those two federally declared disasters and I hope we jump into the county's role as a first responder. And so this year, we find ourselves with this deficit. One component, and I'll tell you all the solutions we're finding. And the bottom line is, is nothing is final, right? We will all have to vote. This is a highly iterative process. It's been months of work and we're literally, my team is at the office right now, just line by line on these budgets. So take that with this, you know, disclaimer. So in terms of the law enforcement, frankly, since I took office in 2023, Harris County was already approximately 20% behind in what we pay our Harris County law enforcement officers. And to clarify for our listeners, we, Harris County, we're on first for the unincorporated areas. And there's now more folks in the unincorporated areas than in the city of Houston. So this is our Harris County Sheriff's Office and our eight constables offices. So we were already behind. And then Mayor Whitmire and the city, as y'all know, passed the HPD approximately 36.5% pay raise, a five-year plan. So add that approximately now 60% behind. We invest your taxpayer resources in recruiting, in training our law enforcement officers. HPD has approximately 1,200 vacancies. We cannot lose our law enforcement officers that we have trained, those years of experience, and they're doing what's right for them and their families, right? They're, they can earn so much more, right? Like I, you know, I'm still paying off my student loans. I get it, right? I don't, I don't fault anybody, but Harris County, we need our deputies. And so we were already, we already had approximately 320 vacancies that we were having a hard time recruiting and retaining folks exacerbated by this historic 36.5% increase. So we need to do something and take decisive action to make sure that we are not going to be hemorrhaging officers to HPD and other agencies surrounding counties, et cetera. So me and two other members of the court, we decided to take decisive action. We are going to have pay parity in a five-year plan. We worked collaboratively with our law enforcement partners, the labor partners, the court offices, budget office, county attorney, et cetera. And so we have a plan. So that will cost approximately 101, 102 million. And again, I've, and this is so important to me because number one, public safety is the issue I hear over and over from my constituents in a bipartisan way. And I've been the victim of crime several times. So when, we want law enforcement officers to show up and I don't want the response times which need to be reduced already. I don't want them to be exacerbated for my constituents here in Harris County.
Which Commissioner Breones, I think, sounds excellent. And I think most people can get behind everything that you've absolutely said, but a lot, like you have said, is a focus during this time has been around raises to Harris County law enforcement, but the county is still in a deficit. And so how do we plan to balance the budget when we are adding to that deficit?
Let me tell you. So again, the COO, this, you're, you're lighting my fire, Celeste. So here we go. So there, again, it's just been a highly collaborative effort. So one will be, one key driver will be vacancy savings. We identified approximately 1,200 vacancies. I'm going to zero in in about 500. 500 of these vacancies were, have been unfilled for six months or more. So these are vacancies that haven't been filled and we're still delivering the high level of service that we are day in and day out. So the vacancy savings will be one driver.
Can you give us an example? What jobs are, are not being filled?
Like an IT position. I mean, they're, they're across, we have over 70 departments, right? So they're across departments, but they're all sorts.
Two people do, or two people are gone and one person's doing the work of those two people and?
It can be, or it can be natural attrition, it could be retirement, or it could just be, you know, things have been streamlined with improved technology, improved technology or, you know, just changes, right? As we continue to grow and expand. So this is across.
Right there for one, just quick question though. As we have this discussion and like Celeste and a lot of people have used the term raises, and I, I think we're misleading. We say it's more pay parity as opposed to giving a reward for good work. It's trying to level a playing field. Is that an accurate way to look at it more so?
Correct. So the bottom line is we would have continued to lose officers, which would have affected all of our public safety. And so this, we're leveling the playing field with HPD. That's the bottom line.
And then you look at these vacancies and it's like, we've, we've been doing fine without them. So why don't we just continue without them and then we'll have that money and not pay it out?
So that's one of the savings. So that's vacancy savings.
Roughly amount of money that gives us.
That'll depend on how many we ultimately cut, but it could be approximately 55 million just right there.
Okay.
Out of 500, if you, of those 500 vacancies, you would say 55 million?
Approximately, it depends because there's 1,200. I'm really folk, and I can't speak for my colleagues, obviously, but I'm really zeroing in on the ones that have been opened for six months or more, right? Because it's, you've been doing the work, there hasn't been an urgency to fill it. We've been moving forward.
I always like to tie it to money because I think we, laypeople don't realize how much these things amount to.
Yes, no, so it's, and please, like, everything is approximate until the vote is cast. So another one is, for example, tech savings. So again, with over 70 departments, many departments were purchasing, whether it's their own laptops, their own licenses to software, et cetera. So we have streamlined that, centralized it in our countywide IT department, which we call universal services. So by, we get volume discount, right? Bulk order discounts. We can pay for one subscription and we save money. So that'll be approximately, depending again, how it exactly plays out, it could be another approximate 12 million right there. There was even landlines, which we have a web phone service. I'm not an IT person, but it's still excited me to be like, we can bring that particular line into the contract for web phone, right? And you can still have the actual desk phone, but do it in a way that consolidates, again, finding savings, being strategic as stewards. Another example is, and this is something that, if you want to talk, we could talk for hours, but our jail, we have serious problems with our jail and there's many layers to that. Well, as many know, we unfortunately have not been passing the state jail standards inspection. And so one of the reasons is actually because we don't have enough detention officers. Again, we need to level the playing field so we can have recruit and retain folks. But the result of that is because we don't have enough staff, we have had to, and because of backlogs that COVID and other things have exacerbated, we've had to outsource folks to three private facilities, which deeply bothers me. Sure. Well, we are on track because of strategic investments, namely in the district attorney's office. District Attorney Sean Tier is a fabulous partner who my team and I work so closely with. We have invested in his office strategically when he took office. Trials are up approximately 30%. We are moving cases, giving victims and defendants their day in court, having an outcome one way or another to these trials. And if somebody is convicted, they go to a state prison. If not, then they, we all can move on. But by moving those cases, now we have been able to responsibly manage those, the overcrowding, right? And the backlog of the cases. And so we are going to be able to end one of the three outsourcing contracts this fall. So that's several million dollars again in savings. And the outsourcing costs, when you ask, how did we get to this budget situation? The key drivers have been one, jail outsourcing, which I cannot wait for the day. And I can tell you other things as a former judge, how we're working to reduce the backlog and move those along. But one is jail outsourcing, two is indigent defense costs, which have approximately tripled in the last few years. Happy to go into more detail if that is of interest and then.
Inject, interject here really quickly. So what you're saying basically is quality of life in Harris County, for those of us living here, would not notice these kind of savings that would go to help pay this police or this law enforcement equity, because you're looking at things that we can adjust without changing services we receive as individuals.
Right. To me, the services we offer, there will be, as far as my vote is concerned, we will not make any substantial cuts to the services we offer, whether that is the potholes we're filling, the ditches we're cleaning, our first responder after disaster services. We have parks, we have community centers, after school programs, summer camps, senior programs. I can go on, on what we offer. Public health, we have immunizations, we have, I mean, all sorts of great work that the county does. That to me will, that is sacred. I will never, the people that we are serving, that will be the last resort as far as I'm concerned. Instead, I'd rather roll up my sleeves and find these efficiencies, which we are successfully doing, and we will pass a balanced budget for 26.
You're listening to Hello Houston. We are speaking with Harris County Precinct 4 County Commissioner Leslie Breones. You can join the conversation at 713-440-8870.
So you, you mentioned the rainy day fund. There's some talk about maybe not, not, not having a full rainy day fund, like taking some of the money from the rainy day fund or, or not putting what you normally put into it.
So one of the proposals from the budget office, and I want to thank our budget director, Daniel Ramos and his team, because they have just really been very solutions oriented and focused. That is one of the suggestions to take a portion of the pick, which is basically the rainy day fund and put it into closing this budget deficit gap. I want to highlight, and I pray that FEMA can, we can talk about the federal government and the cuts that are deeply worrying about me, but we are waiting. So the pick, it would be a small portion, but we are waiting still on $120 million of COVID reimbursement from FEMA, as well as approximately 70 million from FEMA for the derecho and barrel, and approximately 75% of that would be reimbursed. So we, the small amount that would be proposed, again, it's fluid, depending on what the commissioners and the judge ultimately vote on, but that could be a small segment to take out, but it wouldn't be one of these catastrophic reductions.
Are you worried, are you worried we may not get that FEMA money?
Everything we have heard, and we've been very closely in touch with our risk management department and our budget office, they are very confident we will get those reimbursements. Now, taking a step back, am I confident that FEMA, the way we've seen, that they will be here on the ground when we have the next hurricane? Will they be here as swiftly? That I do have open questions, depending on what President Trump continues to do or not do with regard to FEMA, NOAA, the National Weather Service and beyond.
I want to continue getting into the budget and all that and how it works. I'm, I'm kind of curious though, from an outside view looking in, I think everyone looks at us as so partisan in today's world, that you look at the Commissioner's Court and you say it's mostly Democrats, all this stuff is just going to work right through. We've seen a bit of a soap opera happening at Commissioner's Court lately. Where is the division coming from and is there a lack of communication within party members that are elected in moving this forward?
So personally, I have no patience or tolerance for drama or dysfunction. I am, I'm a working mom of three, I'm a lawyer and I used to be a judge. So I want to keep conversations focused on facts and focused on finding solutions. So I really just want to stay laser focused and I hope through my work that you all have seen, you have seen that commitment. So I'm like, I'm here to do the work. I'm not here to create, you know, misinformation or paint this dystopian picture.
Promising that you're not all in lockstep, that different ideas are coming forward, even though it's a primarily Democrat group, that we're seeing these differences and changes.
I mean, I believe deeply in independent thinking and decision-making. I know I see that with my three daughters, you know, it's like you want them, everyone is their own person and I am a, you know, a strong woman with a lot of thoughts and I do my homework. So I will always call it, and like I see it, and you know, everyone's there to serve the people.
There is a text we got from Leaf, "With a $48 million shortfall, isn't it logical to talk about raising taxes? And what is the principal source of revenue for the county?"
As far as my vote is concerned, raising taxes to me is a last resort. Before I go to the people of Harris County and try to raise the taxes, it has to be a last resort. I want to know that we have scoured every line item to see another example. And I can go on and some of the other examples we found.
We've talked about vacancy, we've talked about tech, we've talked about jail. Where are some, and we're still not quite there yet in numbers.
Some of them are overtime efficiencies as well. Others are like travel and training. For instance, adjustments to travel budgets and you can go to online conferences. I mean, there's things like that, fleet.
Well, if you're talking 48 million, if you get the 55 million from the vacancies, we are there.
We're, we're, well, that's part of the, how we've reduced it. So we're, it's still a work in progress, but literally we are working around the clock to find those additional savings. And the more you continue to scour, the more helpful it is. And you'll hear, for instance, what we asked all the departments to do is present, we call it a 90% current level of service, which is essentially present 10% a menu of potential options. This is not, and I want to repeat, not an automatic cut, potential options where you can help us find efficiencies and smart savings in your department. So that could be office supplies, that could be travel and training, that could be a whole host of things, right? And so we are looking at their proposed options as well as the full budget to find other, and this is a highly communicative process. We'll have department hearings that folks can tune in on, online. We still have several more court meetings.
Which Commissioner Breones, when you sit here and you talk to us and you're looking at this and you're trying, you're saying, we're going to close the gap through vacancies and tech and jail and, and all of, and you know, over, overall trainings and things like that, and you're whittling it down. It makes a lot of sense and it sounds really good, but there has been a lot of tension. So explain to us, when you have only four commissioners and you have a judge, how are you all going to find that resolution? And what is the biggest conflict that's happening that we aren't in line and in step and moving forward?
So I don't want to speak for my colleagues and what might be driving their lack of understanding or lack of solutions oriented thinking, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm like, we don't have time for that. We must close this gap, we must do it responsibly, and we need to preserve all services to the absolute best of our ability.
Right. So my question is, where does the tension lie then?
I don't want to conjecture for other folks where the tension comes from, from them, but I can say that as, again, as a lawyer and as a former judge, I'm looking at the facts and evidence. And again, we still have work to do. It is highly iterative and I thank the department heads and all the teams working tirelessly. But it's about folks who want to do the work to find the solutions versus just create, you know.
We had the judge in here and she was, and she was talking about the penny tax. And I'm curious where we stand on that, how your understanding of it and your decision on how you voted on it.
Right. So no one supported, none of my, myself or the other colleagues, no one supported her proposal.
Okay. Well, Rodney Ellis was a little bit of a support, wasn't he?
He did not vote in favor for it, but I don't want to.
You were there, I went there.
I don't want to speak for anyone else.
So simply based on voting, nobody voted for the penny tax?
Correct.
Okay.
Other than her proposal. To clarify, there was no support other than what she brought. This was an idea that we heard about through the media, and I love the media, but we heard about it two weeks before court from the media. If you look like at one of our peer counties, for instance, Travis County, they spent approximately two years working with experts, with stakeholders, with schools, with businesses, with, to design a program, working with the community to get the communication information out on what this tax increase would deliver for the people of Travis County. And even after two years of work, they're still in the process of launching, even after it passed. So what we have done in Harris County, thanks to the Biden-Harris administration, we have, as y'all know, had one-time ARPA funds, which we designed, and this happened even before I got to court, and all my votes that I've taken have been supportive of these ARPA pilots. These are pilots and there's a different streams of work within the early childhood portfolio that we have offered here in Harris County to help rebound from the pandemic. And I used to be a teacher, I'm the daughter of teachers, I'm a mom of three kids. I mean, childhood education and education generally is of deep importance to me. But to me, it's too important to not do right. And meanwhile, we will have a third-party independent evaluation of each of these pilot projects, see what has worked, what is not, why. So we, as fiduciaries and as leaders, we need to make data-driven decisions and we need to have a scalable and sustainable path forward that is built on true data and true stakeholder engagement. So I did not support for those reasons.
Safe to say, the concept isn't what you have an issue with, the process and how it came to be, you have concerns with.
It's the process.
It's the process.
You know, something else that, you know, we're talking about education and budget, something else that we know is very top of mind for Harris County residents is disaster readiness and response. Can you talk to us about where we are in that regard?
Yes. So because of what the federal administration and Trump are doing with FEMA, NOAA, and National Weather Service, it is a time here in Harris County where we're continuing to double down and be extra prepared and extra nimble and ready to respond. We, the four precincts, we're the first responders in terms of, and I was so proud of my team. We were the first governmental jurisdiction on the ground, picking up debris, clearing roads. We set up distribution centers, gave out food, water, ice, and had cooling centers. Like we are on the front lines of defense. So what we're doing to be even more prepared is continuing these community partnerships. For instance, I used to be a tax lawyer back in the day and I used to help run a, a national nonprofit. So we have a 501(c)(3), a public charity arm, as do several of my colleagues. And so using community partnerships so that we have reserves of ice, water, food. We have now backup generators so that we can activate cooling centers, right? We're stockpiling, so to speak, so that we're extra prepared. And the Texas Department of Emergency Management has been a great partner for the time that I have been in office, but it can take approximately 72 hours. And I want to make sure that we can respond as nimbly and promptly for our constituents. So we're working, and then we were working on not only immediate, how can we improve our immediate response, but then also longer term in terms of resilience, right? So that's everything from, we had successfully received the Solar for All grant, which is approximately 250 million from the Biden-Harris administration. Harris County led the way and we worked with several other jurisdictions in Texas as a partnership to create alternative, you know, solar energy for underserved neighborhoods. We just learned a little over a week ago that Trump has.
Cut that.
Cut that program. So we will, we will hopefully solve it in court, but in the meantime, that is one thing. But in the meantime, working with flood control to build back nature-based infrastructure. And so native seed mixes, grasses, so my team and I, we also, we're on first for infrastructure projects. So we're putting them through this envisioned framework to make sure that resiliency is top of mind as we deliver infrastructure projects. So there's things in the short, mid, and long term, but Harris County, we will continue to double down. I pray that FEMA won't. I pray we don't need it. I literally, I would never leave my house without this cross string. I'm a person of faith. I literally pray every day that we do not get a hurricane or any other disaster. But when we do, we will be your first responders and we will show up.
What I'm hearing when you're talking is it's kind of almost where we were as, as the country with DOGE, is that the majority of people agreed government was bloated and it needed to be looked at and cut a lot of things. But what the problem seemed to be with DOGE was it was just cutting without looking at anything. And what I'm hearing from you is it's taking that scalpel and deep down and actually looking at the things that work and don't work, things that we're overpaying for or underpaying for for performance, all of that. And in doing that, do you believe, at least at this point, there is enough to balance out this budget and do that increase? Can we be better stewards of the money and actually hit our goal? Because one thing I always argue on this show is I worry, we have gotten too big to support our organizations anymore when it comes to government.
The short answer in response to your question is yes. It's yes. I mean, I, again, I grew up check to check. I take this so seriously. I never, ever thought I'd work in government, to be honest. If you want to hear that story, that's a whole other story. Might entertain your, your viewers, but truly, I never thought I'd work in government. And everybody, from whatever part of the political spectrum, just wants the government to work. And there's so much disillusionment and distrust. And to me, as long as the people give me the chance to serve them, I will show up, I will do the hard work, and I will be a steward to the best of my ability.
So for the most part, you believe the money is there.
Yes, yes. There's some, there's another example, there's, and I get so fired up about this because it's like, I feel, you know, I, I think of my little girls and they, they love doing these like treasure hunts, right? It's like literally going line by line. There's departments that have had historic surpluses, year after year after year, millions, some of them. And this is rightsizing the budget, right? It is about being strategic stewards to make smart investments, to do more with less. And so it's not draconian and it is not haphazard. It is very thoughtful, very deliberate as far as, you know, my team is concerned. And we will get to a balanced budget, period, because we're relentless and I will have it no other way and we will move forward. And, and meanwhile, we'll continue to make progress on some of these big cost drivers like the jail outsourcing and indigent defense. And we are doing the hard work to address those issues head-on.
You know, everyone always talks about Republicans being conservative fiscally and Democrats being socially forward. I know you've had a, you've been very supportive of the LGBT community. Thank you for that, appreciate that.
Always.
And, but you sound very much like a Republican when it comes to conservative fiscal ideas. But you consider yourself a Democrat.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. But, but I, I mean, I like that. I, I like that people want to watch the budget.
I, so I'm a proud lifelong Democrat, but to me, governing is not about a partisan politics. Governing is about delivering progress and delivering results, period. And to go back to the LGBTQIA+ plus, I'm a very proud lifelong ally, always have been, always will be, and I'm so thrilled that we have our commission for the first time in Harris County. And, and it's a both and in my, you can be a steward of taxpayer resources and make sure you're championing, you know, working class families and fairness and opportunity. It's not an either or. And so yes, I take every taxpayer dollar and someone who's, again, grew up check to check, I take this very seriously because affordability is something I hear about from my constituents all the time.
Speaking of looking forward, there is going to be an election coming up and we've already seen a lot of folks jumping into the race to be the next Harris County judge. Thoughts on the race, the candidates that are out there, any that you support? Where do you lie right now in this?
I will not be getting involved in that race. I will be very focused on my race and I, I know the people of Harris County will pick the person who best aligns with their values.
Are you at all interested in being Harris County judge?
No. I love, I love being commissioner. We are in the front lines of whether it's our community centers, our parks, filling potholes, cleaning ditches, like we have so many direct services to constituents. And I have a team of approximately 500 hardworking public servants and I love every day to show the government can work.
Do you feel it's time for a change in leadership? Do you feel maybe a new direction would be good for our county?
I really don't want to comment on her, any other elected officials, but I just, to me, we need people who will deliver and who are there to do the hard work day in and day out. And so I hope everyone will continue to lean in to what I believe government should be, right? Government should be a partner. It should be a convenor. It should be a collaborator. It shouldn't, shouldn't be a barrier. It should be a, a way to make life easier. Um, and it is a way where we have to be, again, good stewards and good fiduciaries. So I, I don't think this, this to me is a R versus D issue. We should all want to be good stewards of our earth, of our, you know, natural resources. I mean, to me, maybe it's being a mom, I think ultimately, right? It's like, what are we leaving behind for our kids and grandkids? And so I want them to have a balanced budget, just as I want them to have, I pray, not these, you know, continued effects of climate change, right?
As we get closer to the race, do you expect to endorse a candidate or will you stay out of it all the way till the end?
For the county judge race? Oh no, I will not be getting involved at all.
Well, you're very refreshing. It's nice to talk to you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Harris County Precinct Four County Commissioner Leslie Breones. Commissioner Breones, again, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.